Anna.
Hi there. I got nervous for a minute.
You're here.
I had sweat. Bethany just sent me the link. I had an old link.
Oh, Abby was just sending it too. I wasn't 100% sure how to send it on the webinar piece. So Abby was kind enough to say she'd resend.
Hey, there's nothing like getting your heart rate up like three minutes before game time. It's all good.
All right. So we'll wait for everybody to join here. And I believe we are recording. Then I'll have a bit that I have to read just before we start the meeting. And then we'll do the nominations and get rocking and rolling.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Bethany, we kind of have the same color.
Yeah, we do.
House color, yeah.
Look at that. Great minds think alike.
Yep.
I know. We're trying to plan a lot of repainting of things in the midst of all of this. Like, everything needs a brush coat.
I think you just get John Lash. John Lash and his kids.
He's been doing a great job of painting.
Holy cow, his entire house is done. Oh, Bethany, did you see now? Do you see what happened?
Oh, you're me.
So Kathleen's gonna be you too.
Oh, my goodness. How is that?
I think whoever the host is though, I think the host can change the name.
Who do you want to be, Anna?
Well.
They spelled your last name P A.
R R I L L. That's a good one.
There you go.
Call me Dr. B and I'm all over it. You have to change Kathleen.
You're lucky it was me and not Adam. It could have been anything if it was Adam.
Oh, boy.
Can you change Kathleen too?
Oh.
Oh, it says on Bethany.
Yeah.
Is that better?
Thanks, Michelle.
You're welcome.
I never realized how important good posture was until we started this. Anyone else finding that? Holy cow.
I have to alternate between standing and sitting and it's just.
Yeah.
All right. So we'll wait for the rest of the board members to jump on here.
Tom and Josh, are you doing this a lot also?
A little bit for work and then just for these meetings, but other than that, not terribly. We have a thing on Wednesday we usually do in person for some of our fundraisers that will do this on. But other than that, it's just been small staff stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, not. We do a meeting a week for the preschool. So that's about all the four-year-olds can handle.
Yep. Yep, your best three minutes you got.
Yep, pretty much. Now, it says there are 11 participants. Is that because there are non-panelists that aren't showing up on the screen?
Yes.
Okay. I see. Ellen is.
Ellen is a participant.
She should have had a panelist.
She might have clicked the wrong link, maybe.
Yeah, so I see she's.
Apparently, you can make her the, you can make her a panelist.
Promote to panelist. Come join us, Ellen. And Beth.
And John Glover. Oh, no.
No, John Glover.
What about Danae?
Nope, Danae would be not a, I don't think Danae would be a panelist.
Can you guys see me now?
Yeah.
Yep.
They can.
Yay.
Perfect.
There's nobody in the waiting room, right?
I will. I don't think so. I'm gonna make Danae a panelist just in case she needs to ask us a question or two. So let me go over here and thank you for bearing with me because although I have run, it feels like a thousand Zoom meetings at this point, I have not done many as webinars. So this is brand new to me too, figuring out what's where. So who are we missing?
Terry.
Terry. I don't see Terry in the attendees.
Beth, do you want to text her? Because she might be using the old link that Danae sent.
Yep, I will text her right now.
Right. Do we want to give her a minute or two to join before we jump into the meeting? Or would you like me to start?
Let's give her just a second.
Well, you know what? While we're waiting for her to join, why don't I, well, I guess we'd have to call the meeting to order. So let's give her a second then. We'll wait.
I actually had to join, leave, and then rejoin because none of you can see me.
I did too. Yeah, I did too. Yeah, you guys ended up in the attendees section instead of the panelists.
Okay, yeah, because I clicked the link at the very top, but if I had to click the link below.
Yep. So while we're waiting for Terry, I will just mention that I am standing in for Adam for this meeting. And so acting to open up the meeting as this is the first meeting of the Amherst School Board and is your organizational meeting after the vote.
All right, give me just a second. So I'm opening up the agenda anyway. And that gives Terry a minute to reply to the text that I sent.
Nope, there she is. Hi, Terry.
Hey, sorry I'm late. I can't find my headset, so hope you can hear me.
We can hear you fine, or I can anyway.
I've been, I've been searching around frantically and Ken just left to go drop something off. Oh, well.
Okay, so it seems like we're good to go. So I will call the meeting to order at 6:05. And as I shared just a minute ago, I am opening this meeting starting as Chair, standing in for Adam, the Superintendent of Schools. As we are concurrently running three board meetings at this time, so I get the pleasure of spending the evening with you guys. I will start by reading an opening that talks about our need to do this meeting remotely. So let me start with that first. And then we'll go into the organizational section where we fill the officer positions of Chair, Vice Chair, and Secretary, and other committee positions with board members. And then at that point, I will turn the meeting over to the Chair. So to start, we have, as Chair of this meeting, I have determined that given the potential health issues associated with COVID-19 pandemic, the governor's declared state of emergency in New Hampshire due to COVID-19, and the public health authorities' recommendations for social distancing, quarantine, and self-isolation, this meeting constitutes an emergency pursuant to RSA 91-a colon 2, 3B, in that immediate action is imperative and the physical presence of a quorum not reasonably practical. And the organization needs to conduct its regular meeting to continue to move the business of the organization forward during this pandemic. As a result, members of the public body may participate by phone, and a quorum need not be present. Any actions taken must be by roll call vote. For the record, this meeting has been properly noticed for more than 24 hours. Any questions on that? Okay, we're good. Okay, that being said, then the first order of business is to elect a Chair. So I will take nominations for the position of Chair. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Beth Kuzma to continue as Chair.
Okay, thank you. Hearing that, are there any additional nominations for the position of Chair? I'll ask one more time. Any other nominations for the position of Chair of the School Board? Hearing none, then I will accept a motion for nominating Beth for the position of Chair of the Amherst School Board.
I'll make a motion.
And a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. And we would then need a roll call vote. So I will call out your name. Josh?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
And Terry?
Yes.
Thank you very much. I will now turn the meeting over to the Chair. Congratulations, Beth.
Thank you.
And then on the, on the organizational list, if you want to continue down that, you can fill the rest of the positions.
Yep. So I, next up on the list is a nomination for, can I take a nomination for Vice Chair?
I would love to nominate Tom for Vice Chair.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, I'm gonna ask one more time if there's any other nominations. Okay, taking that, can I have a motion to elect Tom as Vice Chair?
Motion.
Josh?
No.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Hi, Ellen, second. So I'm gonna roll call. Josh?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Um, Secretary, can I have a motion, sorry, a nomination for the role of Secretary?
I nominate Ellen.
I was gonna say I'm willing to do it. Terry's like, don't nominate me.
I don't know how to nominate without saying, not me, so.
You do. That's exactly what you do, is toss somebody else's name out there.
Well played, Terry. Well played. No, I was good. I was gonna volunteer because I figured nobody wanted it.
Does any, is, are there any other nominations out there or anybody else interested in it? Okay, I'm gonna roll call. Josh?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Terry?
Very much yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Okay, going down the list, we are going to select and pick and choose the different committees that we have. We need to liaison to the Ways and Means Committee. This past year, it was Tom and Ellen. I don't know if anybody else is interested and wants to do it? Or if you two would like to do it again?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind continuing with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I can do it again.
Um, is anybody else interested in taking that one particularly?
Wait, I'm sorry. I was pulling up the list. What, which one was it?
Ways and Means?
Oh, no. Y'all knock yourselves out.
Okay, so Tom and Ellen for Ways and Means. Manifest, this year it has been Tom and Ellen. I know Josh is so excited to take this.
Very excited.
So who wants, we need two. Who wants to be the second?
Beth, I'm happy to continue on with it and help train Josh.
That's awesome. Okay, so we have Josh and Ellen for Ways and, sorry, for Manifest. SAU Budget Committee. This is part of the, it's kind of like being a SAU Ways and Means person. We can select it now. Things can change when the time comes to actually do that part of the budget. If we need to switch it up, we can. But we can select it now just for.
I can do SAU.
Okay, Terry. Policy Committee. I've actually been on Policy Committee this year. I'd really like it. I'd like to stay if everybody's okay with that, but we need one other person. They do meet during the day usually. Sometimes they're bigger chunks of the day as well.
That sounds like Josh. Hey, Josh, wanna be on policy?
That would be a really good one for Josh, I think.
Yeah, I'm happy to do it.
Okay, so Josh and I. Joint Facilities. I know it's.
I would love to stay on it.
Okay, I had a feeling you guys would want to. Um, PTA, Josh and Tom. I think this is gonna be between.
Who were the two on Joint Facilities?
Ellen and I.
Ellen.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, the PTA, I don't, if you, I know Josh is really active in the PTA. Tom, you did an amazing year, job this year as well.
Yeah, I'm fine staying with that.
Okay. But I think also knowing Josh is there a lot of the time as well, if there's something you can't make, reaching out to him.
Yep.
Um, the Mount Vernon School Board Negotiation Committee. So this is, we are up for re-working our contract, I guess you could say, with the Mount Vernon for tuition agreement. So this fall, we're gonna start negotiating with them. Um, I would like to do that. I know, Tom, you also showed some interest.
Yeah, I would like to. But if somebody else is, you know, dead on doing it, I can, I can sidestep, but I'd like to do it.
I think you guys as Vice Chair and Chair, that's a great combo for that.
Okay. Michelle, did you get that?
Yep.
Okay. RSEC, there's no number down there. I don't think it's our year to do it. Because it rotates throughout the SAU.
Really?
Yes. Is my understanding for that one.
Sure.
We can always come back to it if we need to.
Yeah, so I think, let's leave that one. We can come back to it if, once we double check to make sure that, that's how it works. But my memory is that one. A Liaison to the Town of Amherst Board of Selectmen. Ellen, I know that was you this year. Are you interested in staying? Does somebody else?
Really, I felt like the meetings conflicted with a lot of what I was doing with Ways and Means and then School Board meetings. It was a little tricky.
Okay.
I'm happy to pass it off.
Yeah, I can take that one.
I was gonna say Terry is a little deep, more deeply connected with that.
Okay, I can do it.
All right, CIP, this is the Capital Improvement Plan for the five-year meetings and things like that. We would like two people to step up for that. I would love to take that this year, if you guys are okay.
I'm okay with that. Last year it was tough for me because they met it between three and four most days. So I could only make the first two meetings, I think. And then the rest, it was just work and picking up our youngest daughter. So I could never could make it to a meeting after like the first two. So I would prefer to be off that just because I can't commit to the time that they meet.
Okay. Um, okay, so I.
Be your backup on that one.
Thanks, Terry. And maybe we can nudge for like a two to three maybe, Michelle?
I know that one, that one, it tends to be the primary attends and there's a backup. Just like, we don't both attend most of the time.
Okay.
So if you want to be primary, I can be backup.
A Liaison to the Rec Department?
Happy to do that if no one's doing it already.
Okay, have at it, Josh. A, somebody to serve on the Wellness Committee. I know I can't usually make the meetings that he schedules.
What are they usually?
Yeah, what are they?
It's like three, it's three o'clock in Mount Vernon is what he's done in the past when he's had them.
Um, tricky for me, depending on what day, but.
Yeah, they were, they, Wednesdays, I believe it was. He hasn't been meeting a whole lot, though. Um.
Who is it?
I think it was John.
John Lash?
Oh, John Lash is the one that runs it. John Glover was the one that was doing it.
Got it.
So.
I mean, if it doesn't meet that often, if it's not a huge commitment, then I can be on it and available if they start running.
Okay. And then if they do, we, maybe you and I can chat as well. And if it becomes an issue and we can try to figure out a way to make it.
Yeah.
Okay. Liaison sort of sorts, somebody to serve on the New Hampshire School Board Association. They have semi-annual meeting. It's usually an all-day Saturday kind of deal.
I can do that.
Okay, thank you, Terry.
Who did you settle on for the Wellness Committee?
Josh.
That's what I thought. I just wasn't, I wasn't sure. Thank you.
Yep. Terry for the New Hampshire School Board Association. Um, Tom. Sorry, I'm looking at the Facilities Expendable Trust Fund. Is that what you did last year?
It was the trustees for the trust fund. I did that last year. Yeah, they meet quarterly, so I can continue to do that. That's fine.
Okay. Um, if you need help attending meetings, definitely tag me in as well. Okay.
And I think in the three meetings I went to, there was one thing that concerned us. The rest was all out of town stuff, so it's fine.
Okay. Um, and then the AEA and ASSA negotiations, we are not in a negotiation year for either one of them. So if it's anything, usually this role acts as a liaison. So we usually, in off years, we only have one person assigned to it, so I can take that. Because I've done it for the past couple of years and just kind of acts as like a liaison person. So if everybody's okay with that, and if something ends up happening and, you know, we need negotiations, we'll sign a second person to it if it comes, but it doesn't. Um, okay, so we have finished with that. Um. Okay.
I will attempt to share the agenda on the screen, so you'll see how that goes.
Okay. Oh, I wanted to say, as we move along with the meeting, since we're virtual, if everybody can use their like, raise your hand or like the thumbs up or clap your hands or something that will help me be able to see if somebody has, wants to say something. I will work through that and I'll just go in order of when I see them and I'll keep a list.
Is that, is that in the chat or?
Yeah, if you open up chat, it's in there, Ellen. I just found it myself. I couldn't find it before.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, or if you look under the panelists or the participants, it's like the little people's heads. You can raise your hand at the bottom as well. If that's what.
So are folks able to see the agenda?
Oh, I see. Okay.
Yes.
Yes, yes, we can see it.
Thank you, Michelle. Okay, so.
You want us all muted then, Beth, and just raise our hands if we have a question?
Um, no, I don't mind if you guys aren't muted as long as it doesn't get rowdy. It's been going well. Um, so moving on to the consent agenda, do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Can I?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, we need to roll call every vote, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so all in favor, I'm, sorry, my, I have so much on my screen to try to go through this. So Ellen?
Yes.
Josh?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
I'll also vote yes to approve the consent agenda. I just wanted to raise awareness to the unanticipated revenue of $1,500 for an outdoor, for a grant for an outdoor classroom over at Clark from the New Hampshire Audubon.
And that is in addition to the money that is being used on, from the runathon. I'm drawing a blank on the name.
It's a run.
Runathon back in the fall, yes. Yeah, it's fun, thank you.
Correct, Tom. Yep, in addition to, and delegated to Clark because the funds were a little lower there.
Great.
So, thank you. I know that Ellen and our amazing building principals worked hard on that grant, so thank you guys. Um. Okay, on to the big topic of the evening. We have the AMS Plumbing. We are at the end, we're hit, approaching the end. Trying to see if John was, um, we are approaching the end of the two-year warrant article, special warrant article for the AMS Plumbing. So we're, we've gone back to take a look. John Glover went through and did a walkthrough with John Robichaud, Colin, who is the head custodian over there, over February break, to talk to them about making sure that we had everything we needed. Is there anything, any additional work? And there had actually been a quote that came in from, whether it be, actually, that was shortly after, because it was February break, so in March. There is some additional work they feel needs to be done over there to finish this project. That is in the board packet. So I'm also going to go through, there was a list of questions that John came up with that during his walkthrough, that I am going to.
Hey, Beth?
Yep.
John does have his hand up. I don't know if he.
He does, I can't see, hold on.
If you, yeah.
I can't see him.
I wanna, I wanna stop sharing the agenda for now.
Michelle, you might have to add him in.
Thank you.
Yeah, he's gonna be added as a panelist to say anything, I believe.
Oh, that's why.
I believe he is a panelist, yep.
So you guys can see him.
He's just an attendee at the moment.
Oh, he's in there now.
He's on the panelist list, but you're muted, so.
All right, John, go ahead and unmute yourself and give me, give us a quick rundown of the, I didn't see you in the, I still don't see you in there, but.
Let me say, oh, you know.
John Robichaud is, John Glover is not a part panelist.
Oh.
Oh, he's the attendee.
I thought I misunderstood which John had a question, sorry.
Gotcha.
So, would you like me to unmute John for, to ask his question?
John Glover?
John?
Yes.
You go.
There he is.
John.
There we go. Hi, John. John, would you mind, sorry, I didn't realize you were in there. So would you mind giving the board a quick rundown of your walkthrough with John Robichaud and Colin? And mention some of the things that you noticed, questions that you had. We are gonna go through some of the questions a little bit more in depth. If you want to give a quick overview, that'd be great.
Sure. Firstly, thanks for the opportunity to address the board. This walkthrough that I did with John Robichaud and Colin back in February was, the intent was to just kind of understand where that project stood, knowing that the, that the special warrant funds, whatever was remaining, was going to expire at the end of June. And so the idea was to understand what was done and to see if there were any opportunities to further complete the job or not. Okay, so we met during winter break, so there weren't any, any people in the building, which was a perfect time to do the walkthrough. We started at the back corner of the gym, which is where the main line comes into the, the main water line comes into the building. And, and it basically traced what was done from there throughout the entire building. We looked at every sink, every toilet, every janitor's closet, every lab sink, water fountain, shower, kitchen facilities, laundry, and so on. Most of the detail of this, I've already written up and have emailed the board previously, so there's a lot of detail in there that is already in writing. And maybe you want to consider putting that into a public format so that everyone can see the fruits of that, those summaries. And essentially, the gym wing, so that includes the gym, the arts wing, the kitchen, and the janitor area, was more or less fully replaced, except for like this 15 to 20-foot-long section, the locker rooms and the boiler room. I'm not totally under, totally clear why that section was not replaced. It was one of my questions. One of the nice things that was done was the kitchen was fully. One of the nice things that was done was the kitchen was fully, fully replaced, so that should be, should be clean. Unless, I mean, I don't know what's going on with the 20-foot section that wasn't replaced. So I'm not sure how that connects with the kitchen, if at all. All right. The rest of the building was essentially fixtures and filters were put on all of the sinks. And the toilets were not done, which is maybe fine. One of the questions that I had was, what is the filter replacement program going to look like? Because now with, there's an ongoing maintenance need with respect to replacing the filters. And in my view, there'd be great if you could figure out a way to replace them when they're needed to be replaced and not beforehand. Otherwise, it's just a lot of work going on for year after year after year after year. And so one of the questions that I had was, is there a way to screw on some kind of flow meter and be able to gauge how many gallons are flowing through any particular filter over time so that you can just read the gauge and then replace as necessary? And I'm not sure what the, what the answer to that question is, but that is an outstanding question in my view. And then there are some areas of the building that were not touched, principally exterior outlets in addition to the toilets. And the solution that came about was by putting non-potable water signage in those areas. You know, anything exterior would have to be pretty durable, something metal. And then anything interior could be, you know, laminated and taped to the wall, I suppose. I'm not sure what else to recap on that, so if anyone has any questions for me, please ask.
Um, thank you, John. All right, so we're gonna, what we're gonna do is we're gonna go through, kind of highlight some of the questions. I'll be forwarding the information over to Danae so she can include it as part of the minutes. And then, but just so we can go through it and decide at this point where we want to go from here. And if we, you know, we're down to deciding what we need to, or will be able to return to taxpayers, and if there's anything additional funds that we need to be spending, so. What came up, okay. So in a conversation with John Robishow, we did find one of the reasons that 20, 15 to 20-foot section wasn't replaced back when the original stuff was, is we were running down to a, down to the wire for school opening with all the other plumbing work that had been done over the summer. And it's actually a surprisingly intricate 15 to 20 feet with lots of joints and offshoots and welding and things like that. So it was put on the back burner because at that point it was not going to, at that, and John Robishow, or can you unmute yourself so you can jump in if I misspeak on anything?
Gladly.
At the time, it was decided that it wasn't an absolutely emergent thing, like getting all of the plumbing done to the kitchen. None of this actually connects to the kitchen in a way that means the kitchen plumbing is still contaminated, so that is a separate section. So we've, in the board packet is a bid from Weatherby to replace this 15 to 20 feet of plumbing, as well as, you know, little noxious connectors I was discussing to fix this, on top of some other issues that were, there's actually been some leaks in this area, right, John?
Yes, yes.
Um, so that is one of the additional reasons of why we're looking at this more closely now. It is, the total cost of the work is $32,450. John Robishow, would you mind speaking a little bit to what is included in the bid so that, you know, just a quick explanation?
Yeah, yeah, well, the, the decision, I'll try to go into a little detail, to not replace that section had a little bit, had a lot to do with when we changed the plan from doing all the plumbing in the building to just the, taking care of the kitchen. This, this didn't come into play with the kitchen. It was a huge amount of work for, it's going to take them a week to do it. And we were coming down to the crunch with the end of the school year, and it was just left out because everything that goes through that pipe that is drinking water would end up having a filter on it anyway. So replacing it at the time would have been replacing it just to replace it. And we had the time constraints and there was no benefit since we would be filtering all the water anyway. Now, what the work entails is that section of pipe is in a ceiling that's a mess, full of wires and plumbing, and there's a bunch of different takeoffs on it. And so they'll replace that 15 to 20-foot section, all the takeoffs. They re-feed a water heater that's in the, in the boiler room and, and replace the supply lines, not to every fixture that's in the boiler room. There's like a mop sink and a, and a sink they use to clean paintbrushes, I think, and a trashcan washing machine. It wouldn't be replacing all the plumbing to those, but it does replace the supply lines that feed to them. But that's basically it. It's, they say it's going to take them a week for a whole crew to be in there, so it's, it's, it's bigger than, than you think when you look at a 20-foot piece of pipe. There's actually a lot of work that goes into it and it's hard to get to, so it's, that's basically what it is.
Um, Tom, you have a question on this?
Yeah, so I guess, John, judging from the, the notes that I've seen on this, it has started to leak. They found a couple of leaks in it since they started the work last summer on the rest of the project. And it's only going to take a week. We have the money left in the thing, so it seems to me that it would make sense for them to go forward with this because it has those leaks in addition to the other factors, correct?
Yeah, I think so. If it's, it's starting to leak, we can eliminate it and then, you know, if there's any more plumbing work done in the future, it's out of the way and we can take it from the end of that piece of pipe.
Do any other board members have a question regarding the proposal? Um.
So. I think we should probably say that we did, we did our homework and we've, we've discussed this and we've seen, we've asked questions and had them answered before now, so we probably don't have a lot of questions left.
Correct. Tom?
Just for anybody watching. We did our homework.
I'm curious on the protocol for this because if it's already part of, was this not part of the original bid and they changed their mind, or was this, was this part of the original bid and then they changed their mind not to do it because of the scope of the work involved, that it wasn't necessary? Or is this something that we added on after the fact? Because it seems to me that, do we even need to vote on this if it's part of the original warrant?
So the original warrant was a chunk of money. Once we did that, we went out to bid and the amount came back twice as much of what we had from the warrant article. So things were pared down from there. And then we did, we, we went through the most important things at that time. So I think we need to agree to spend this amount of money out of the warrant article.
But this is still money that's left over in that warrant that's already been voted on by taxpayers, correct? Okay, so again, that still needs to have a formal vote done on it, even though we've already, it's already been approved? Not that I'm, you know, I'm not vouching to spend more money like that, but it seems that this is a redundancy because it's part, it was potentially part of the original project.
Um, so back when we did it, I'm trying to remember back that far. I don't know, Michelle, my, yeah, thanks, Michelle.
So the work is still within the scope of the original warrant article, but given the time that has elapsed, it is really in your best interest to rest this and take a formal vote on it. You know, technically, maybe you don't need to, but I think it is, you know, in the interest of transparency, probably the better approach. Just so that folks know, the original warrant article was $310,000 and the amount remaining at this point, or the unspent amount, is $134,994.40. So this is very much within the amount remaining if you want to move forward with this project.
Um.
And if I could just add, any remaining funds at the end of this year will revert back to the taxpayers and offset the tax rate.
Yeah, yeah, so even spending this, we'd have over $100,000 left of that money. So there were several other items that came up with John's walkthrough that I'm considering. And the board as a whole can decide how to handle it. We can add everything together, or we can vote on whether or not to approve this budget and then discuss the other stuff separately, which is what I'm leaning towards. So do you guys agree? Where did Ellen go? There you are.
I'm here.
You got, it just shifted around, so you weren't in the original spot on the screen.
Beth, I just have a quick question before you move on.
Absolutely.
Because I wasn't on the board when this all went through. So the amount asked from the voters was $310,000. Then when you put it out to bid, it came in double that?
For the original scope of work of, yeah.
Okay, and then, so only a portion of it was then spent. How, how much did, how much was the project curved back and, and why? Because there's quite a chunk of change left.
Right, so to, um, and John Robishow, you can help me out a little bit with this. Because you were much deeper in it than I was, but when the bid went out, you know, we knew, you're looking at it from, without having somebody in it. We said the work is going to be this. When we asked for a bid on this, it came out as twice. Part of it was because of how quickly we're asking for the turnaround. And the local plumbers just didn't have the time for that, so they, some of them overshot and things like that. We pared it down to what was most, you know, like John Glover mentioned, we didn't replace plumbing to the toilets. We kind of went with what was the most critical, what are people going to be drinking, consuming, and, you know, using in that sense? We're really hoping people are packing out of toilets. So that those fixtures, there's no filters on those and things, you know, or the plumbing wasn't replaced to those. So we pared it down in such a way that we were able to save money. John Robishow, is, am I missing anything there?
No, so what happens, we hired a, an engineering architecture firm, whatever they are, to tell us what we should budget for the project. And then the bids were, came in twice as much, so we said, okay, how do we, how do we make this work? So we said, well, let's get to, let's take care of just the drinking water, and that's why it was decided to replace the plumbing to the kitchen, everything in the kitchen, all the fixtures, and, and then put filters on everything else. Then after we put the filters on, we said, hey, we still have some money left. It's a good time to change all the faucets to hands-free and lead-free faucets, because a lot of them that were in there were older and still contained lead in them. And so that's basically what got us to what we've spent so far, was we pared it down so we could afford it and it ended up coming in a hundred and something thousand dollars less, even though we didn't do everything in the building. There was, that's how we made it fit the budget number and why there's so much left.
And John, the amount that we spent was a couple dollars over $175,000.
Yes. Just a couple.
Just like, like $5.
Okay.
So John, is, are there any other areas that are concerning at this time before we do this one segment and close up this project?
I don't believe so. The, all the drinking water has new plumbing or filters on it. So the things that aren't, that are not protected are places you normally wouldn't drink from, like a toilet or a mop sink, that type of place. And even though we have filters on all the lab faucets, we still put signs on them that say non-potable water, but they are all filtered.
And so how much are the filters?
There, depends. There's, there's three different types of filters. The ones for the bubblers, they're about $100 apiece, and the ones under the sinks are, I, let's see, I can't get my, $33 apiece, yeah. And there's about 100 filters total, give or take.
Wow, okay, so on a yearly basis, budget-wise, you're looking at?
And the reason being is, all the filters are rated for different, different amounts of, of water. You can run through them, I guess for lack of a better way to word it. So the ones on the bubblers, those, half of the bubblers, they shut off when the filter thing comes on and it won't reset until you replace the filter. Then the other bubblers, they have a warning light on the bubbler that, that a few hundred cups of water before it's done and then it turns to a red light. I don't know the exact amount, but, and then you have to change those. The ones under the sinks, they're good for, I think it was 1,500 gallons. And, and so I, what I came up with, the ones we're actually replacing with are, is a different filter, because I, I found a really good deal on them at the $33. Those are good for, I think it's 4,000 gallons. But we'd probably have to replace them all once a year either way because we don't know what we're running through. So I think $4,000 a year would probably get us pretty close to what we need for, for filters.
That sounds like, sorry, go ahead, Ellen.
Have we tested the water that goes through the filters?
Yes.
Okay, and thumbs up on all results, I'm assuming?
Yeah, all of our results since, since the project has been good.
Okay.
The point that I was going to bring up, you mentioned it's, it's $33 a filter. If we have about 100 faucets, according to the email that we have, that's about $3,300 a year just for those. How many bubblers are there to get you to 4,000?
There's, there's nine, yeah, there's nine bubblers, but I think it's actually a little less than a, than 100, so that's why I.
I always want to make sure that was part of that 4,000. So is there, is it, is there the, an ability for us to stockpile some of these filters, to lock in a price for them now? To be able to have two or three years' worth of supply on these to, you know, to be able to use some of this money for them now?
Yeah, we could definitely buy them. I talked to the supply house and he didn't think there would be any, any savings buying them in bulk because we were already buying the bulk amount at 100 of them.
Yeah, but you're also locking in your price for the next three years if you were to do it now too, in case they go up.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm not opposed to buying three years' worth now.
Okay. Um, now, the one last thing, since we're talking about, or one of the other things that was brought up as part of the walkthrough that I want to make sure we talk about, is there was discussions that the two coaches' showers, which are still used on a pretty, well, except for right now, during the school year are used on a very regular basis by the two coaches or gym teachers. That we, there is a question about the plumbing in there, and John, I know you were going to try to schedule Weatherby to come out and do a quote on that, but we, they couldn't, even weeks ago, they wouldn't be able to get in before this meeting.
Yeah, I thought I was going to have it before today, but that didn't happen. He, he did come out and look at it and said he would get me a price before today, but it never showed up.
The electric fence, if you guys want to let them run a little bit or sniff each other.
Michelle?
Yes?
Do you mind muting that?
I'm on it.
Thanks.
Done.
Oh, I was confused.
I got it right away.
How does he have an electric fence? Jeez.
It's for the dogs, I think.
Now, where was I?
We couldn't get the bid for today.
Oh, yeah, I, I couldn't get, I, he was supposed to have it to me today before tonight, and it never showed up, and then by the time I realized, it was too late, he'd already gone. So, but the, my thoughts on, on the showers are that, um, lead affects you when it's ingested. Washing up with it doesn't, so, and it's probably gonna be four thousand dollars to do those, cause they have to get into the block. That's, that's just a guess on, and from talking to them. So it's a lot of money to protect water that nobody's drinking. And, um, I don't know if there's any value to doing that.
Is it four, four thousand each?
No, I'm guessing that's about what it'll cost to do both of them, but I don't have a firm number. That was just my guess. I'm usually pretty good at it, but
Okay. And by block, you mean cinder block?
Yes.
Okay.
Cause they have to get to the, um, to the plumbing in the wall, and it's all run through the walls, and if they can't snake it down, you have to knock holes in the wall and then patch it. So, yeah, I wish I had that price by today. If it's something you guys wanna do and put an arbitrary number towards it, um, and hope we can do it for that, then but I don't know what, at what number you'd wanna cut this off at.
Michelle?
The, the board could consider an up to number. If they wanted to go that direction and say that you would authorize up to a certain amount toward that particular part of the project.
Okay. Um, and we do have until, like, we could come back at our May meeting and make final number decisions, correct?
Yes. Or if you want.
The work, there is the logistics around getting the work done. The dollars can be encumbered. Um, you just wanna think about the timing to have the work done as well.
Okay, so the, the, is, so to double check, if, as long as we encumber the money, the work can go into the summer a little bit, correct?
Correct.
All right. Do any other board members have any other questions?
I just, I'm looking at all the, the add-on things that are com- coming up here. We have filters that we were talking about for roughly four thousand a year. Showers, you know, by, judging by John's estimate, maybe up to five thousand total for the package, and then there are two other water fountains that are non-Oasis brand. If we wanted to upgrade those, they would be an additional two thousand each. So we're talking about only an additional thirteen thousand here out of a hundred and two. I, I'm not opposed to, to making sure that if we're gonna do this, we do this right. Uh, you know, it's, it's not lead isn't, doesn't affect your body unless it's ingested, but I'm sure that we've all accidentally drank water out of the shower before by mistake. Or if you have kids that do it or whatever, so it's, I, I don't know that it's not worth for five thousand dollars, it's such a small amount. What is it, a penny on the tax rate for everybody in the, in the town? I don't know that it's not worth just doing it, doing it right as opposed to um, you know, scrimping and saving. If it were thirty-eight showers or something, it'd be a different story, but two showers, I don't think it's a, it's a big deal to add this on there, to have it done and have it done right.
Agreement. I agree completely.
Okay. So, let's, real quick, let's focus back on the original bid for thirty-two thousand plus dollars for, um, fixing that twenty feet of plumbing. Let's motion on that, and then let's move on to the rest for another total number. Does that sound fair, guys? Okay, so can I have a motion to accept the Weatherby plumbing bid for uh, thirty-two thousand four hundred and fifty-two dollars to replace, um, that plumbing?
I'll make the motion.
Josh, can I have a second? Oh, my. Let's pick Ellen. All right. Roll call, Josh.
Uh, yes.
Tom?
Yep.
Terry?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Okay, so we've
And I just wanna clarify, it's thirty-two thousand four hundred and fifty.
Yes.
Yep.
I think, that's what I tried to say.
I heard it a little differently, so I just wanted to make sure that
That's what I tried. All right, now, um, on to the other add-on items, so they do we wanna come up with a up to number for the showers? So John thinks it's about four thousand total. Um, there could maybe be a little bit of extra work that we, you know, if they need to blow some holes in some cinder block or something like that. John, is the four thousand a high number or a low number? Or like a middle of the road?
I, I would feel comfortable with five thousand.
Five thousand, okay.
And that's for both showers, so twenty-five hundred each?
Yes.
Okay.
And it may come in less, but without the quote, I hate to sell myself short on this.
Okay.
Why don't we say up to six?
That's what I was gonna say.
Yep.
Okay, so six thousand for the showers. Um, up to six thousand for the showers. The two thousand dollars for each of the three um, water bubblers that are different than the rest. Um, I hear Tom thinks that's a great idea. Ellen, I think I heard the same from you.
Yep.
What do you?
Yeah, I think simplicity, having the same system, rather than having to worry about two different kinds that run out in different ways, it'll just and i- it will prevent a situation where it goes bad and we're still using it for some reason.
And I, and I would presume too, John, that those are different filters, correct, on the Oasis and the non-Oasis brands? We have to have two sets of filters in stock?
Yes, they're both different.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so, John, there's a question. Is there three of them or four of them?
Three.
Okay.
Yes.
Beth, is that two thousand dollars, is that an estimate, or is that what it will cost?
No, that's, they're, they're about fifteen hundred dollars apiece, and then we have to pay to put them in. So it's about two thousand dollars.
Okay, so that's a really good estimate.
Yes.
Okay. Um, so that's another
Six thousand.
Six thousand for that. Okay, and then we're looking at the four thousand a year for filters, doing a pre-buy. So two years gives us eight thousand, three years gives us twelve thousand. Board members, what are you thinking? Three, four? We also have to keep in mind, we have to store them, so we don't wanna buy twenty years' worth. We don't wanna go too crazy, but, um
The more I think about this, Beth, I think that
Sorry, sorry, Tom, what are you gonna say?
I was, I, I think I'm, I'm probably more comfortable with a two-year plan, just because of the other facility work that we're gonna be doing. Um, and the bids that we're gonna be getting over the course of the next year, we wouldn't want to, um, you know, there's no guarantee that anything would have to be changed out of the work that we did, but, you know, God forbid something's back and and Valley Brenzinger says, you know, you should do this over at the middle school, and it impacts the water fountains, and all of a sudden we have to change them again. I don't think that it makes much sense to go beyond two years for them.
That's a decent thought. Okay.
Yeah, but considering what's going on right now, I don't think that any major economic change is going to happen in the next year. And even if we did get something through in the next year or two, it's gonna take time for it to actually happen. So, I don't know that I would see a lot of, of really immediate changes happening at AMS. So I think two seems like a conservative number to me.
Can I ask a question about that? Is there any chance that filters, um, get nasty if they sit for three years?
John?
I would have to consult a professional on that one. I'm not sure what the shelf life is on them.
And I think, John, with that question, it's probably more of a concern for the Oasis filters, because they can be sitting for a minimum of three years. There's no guarantee that, you know, some water fountain in the back corner of the school is gonna go through a filter every year. It may take two years to go through, and all of a sudden and you're looking at a six-year run for some of those filters, so it's not out of the realm of possibility.
Yeah, they're, they're on about once a year. Maybe the higher-use ones are a little more than that. So that's, that's about what they go through.
Okay. All right, any other thoughts, board members? Okay, so two years, we think we're comfortable with? As long as John doesn't come back and say, actually, they get really gross if they sit on the shelf for a year and a half, then we can at that point change our mind, but up to two years' worth of filters? Okay, so that brings us up to, um, two years of filters, six, up to six thousand for the showers, and then six thousand for the bubblers. Um, brings us to an additional twenty thousand dollars. Does anybody wanna make a motion for that?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, Josh?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
And yes, okay.
Can we take a minute to make sure we thank John Glover for all his diligence?
I think he had his hand raised too. I don't know if he has one more question.
I think he's muted too.
I, I'm not sure if he's ready to come back. I can try to unmute him.
I think his right hand never went down.
No, I did. I put it down.
Oh, you did, okay. So John?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes.
An apologies for the electric fence comment. I didn't realize that it was I, I just wanted to say at the, at the close, I, you guys are going in the right direction, in my opinion. I just, it's important to remember that this warrant article was meant to have a permanent solution to lead and plumbing at AMS. And we don't have a permanent solution, okay? So the money, the, the, more money is gonna need to be spent over the, over the coming decades than was authorized, because it was too difficult. So, um, and inasmuch as lead, maybe technically, uh, you know, it's an ingestion problem, it's also a perception problem. So if you, if you, you take steps that you're taking, and I'm, I'm, I'm very happy with the decisions that you've made. But you're still gonna have an ongoing maintenance need, forever. And so as much, uh, filters that you could stockpile now, uh, to ta- to take care of that, use that money for it, because that is part of the permanent solution, I think is advisable. Also, to the extent that you can find a way to measure the, the gallons of water flowing to to different parts of the building, could, could really reduce your four thousand dollars per year maintenance cost by replacing every filter every year, which probably doesn't need to be done. Some of those filters, it, you could take five years or six years before you get four thousand gallons of water to flow through them. So I, I, there's some study that could be done on, on where the water is flowing, how much water is flowing, and where the use is over time, to really hone that in. Um, but at the end of the day, if you've spent every dime of the money that's left today, it would not be wasted, because it's going to need to be spent anyway in the future. And I think when the taxpayers approved this, they thought that there was going to be a permanent solution, that the AMS building was going to be a lead-free building, and that's not the case. So consider that in the coming months, bef- as you, um, contemplate allocating the rest of those funds to this project. Um, and, uh, where, where that will, where, where you come out at the end and say, we're done, and this is why we did what we did. Um, I think you'll be in a really good position if you take those things into consideration. Thanks.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Um, I just lost the, oh, here's the agenda, sorry. Um, okay. So, we have a, um, first read on policies, um, JLCJ and JFABD, which is concussions and head injuries in the admission of homeless students. Um, we already reviewed these in, um, SAU once. This is our first read. But does anybody have any additional questions on it, real quick?
My only comment is, uh, going back to the timing of concussion reports, I know that Steve Coughlin mentioned that it was I don't know if his exact terminology, if it was the accepted protocol or, or whatever it might have been, but I still feel that having information at the end of the school year for all concussions in schools, we, be it via sports or um, be, be it via dancing or theater shows, or kids just tripping in the hall, I would find that information more useful in June than I would in September. Um, this way in case, or maybe even August, this way in case there are any concerns that we have about programs that have repeated history of this, that there's, you know, if there's ways that it can be mitigated, I think that information would be good in June as opposed to September when the doors are open and the animals are out of the barn, and, and we're trying to, you know, backtrack and, and work from there. So that's the only change that I would recommend forward, is that we ask for that information before, you know, before the end of the school year, or at least before the end of June. So we can discuss it in August and propose any changes, or, you know, see what's being done to correct things that are, that have become increasingly violent outside of maybe your lacrosse or football, those, you know, the sports that are traditionally, traditionally concussion-heavy.
But also to see if there's been a large increase in those
Correct.
as well. I, and I agree with Tom. I think it's an excellent point.
I do remember that discussion. Um, well, um,
A- a- and maybe the policy doesn't change, Beth, maybe it's just something that we ask of the school principals, athletic trainers, or, or athletic directors, and then, uh, the SAU administration to get us that information. Maybe it's just something that they provide us, but the policy, that the wording doesn't change necessarily, but we ask for it, and, and they're able to provide it to us early, because by the end, they're not counting this stuff in July. It's already counted by the end of June. It's, cause it's live recording, especially with concussions.
Right. Yeah, I'll, um
That's a good idea, Tom.
I'll take a look at this as well with my policy hat on, um, and pop an email over to the policy committee about it. Um, as well, cause this is the first read, so, um, we'll see if it comes back, or if it's decided that it needs to make a change. With that. Okay. So, um, any other questions on those two policies or comments? Okay, seeing none, uh, we do have a non-public, correct, Michelle?
Correct.
Okay, so, um, we do have a non-public session, so can I have a motion to go into non-public?
I'll make a motion to go into non-public.
Can I have a second?
Second.
That was Ellen.
Do we have to slate the RSA for the reason we're going into non-public?
Yes, it is RSA, um, ninety-one A three, two, and it is, I don't know the letter off the top of my head. But it is the reasoning for me hurt somebody's reputation, correct, Michelle?
Yes.
Yeah, so I'll look up the letter in a minute. Um, but it's, uh, the subtitled letter being that it could potentially hurt somebody's reputation.
Question from
See?
Question from the new secretary?
Yes.
What do I do?
So, it's seven oh five, um, let the minutes note that it is seven oh five, we're going into non-public. Um,
Motion by Tom.
And then
Roll call vote.
Yeah, and we'll roll call vote in, um, and then we, I can help you, um
Yep, the attendees will drop off the meeting, will stop the recording, and then we'll have the non-public meeting. In terms of the, the minutes, um, I think Danae drops off the meeting too, so we can discuss the minutes in, in non-public, and then you come out of non-public.
Yeah. And then you record every, and then we can start recording again.
Correct. So I just record, I'm just doing the minutes in non-public?
Correct.
Good, okay, got it, good.
Okay, so can I have a roll call? Vote, Josh?
Yes.
Gothier?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
And Kuzma, yes. Um, okay, so we are in non-public, if we can somehow
We're not yet in non-public.
Well
Kathleen, Kathleen's going to exit, and Bethany and I are gonna stay.
Yes, I was gonna say, I was gonna ask who the extras are, so Kathleen is leaving.
Two attendees that, I will give them a minute to log out, and we have one left.
Do we not have the ability to cancel their call?
We do. I was giving them the opportunity to.
No, I, I just didn't know how Zoom worked. It wasn't, sorry, it wasn't meant to sound accusatory, it was curiosity.
The, the hostess.
I need to.
And do we have anybody on the telephone that needs to get?
There we go.
I think John was on the telephone.
Yeah, I still have one attendee, so I'm not seeing him in here, but it's listed as an attendee, so maybe he's on the phone.
Okay.
I'm not sure, there we go.
Okay.
No, now we have no attendees. Okay, so I am going to, um, pause the recording. I don't know if I should pause it or stop it.
I'd say stop, just so we don't accidentally restart it.